Meeting of the Town of Maryville Town Council is called to order at 6:30 PM. We will be having an invocation by Reverend Roger Wills from the Trinity Free Methodist Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Bob Leanhart, father of the late Sergeant Brian Leanhart. Can both gentlemen please come up? Everyone please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
My Father in Heaven, we're brought here together by your divine providence, and we pray, Lord, that you will guide the council tonight, and each bit of deliberation that transpires, may it honor you and be blessed by you. We all come with our many agendas, Lord, but we pray, Lord, that whatever agenda you have for this town, this state, and this country will supersede our own notions and our own ideas. Give us wisdom, and love, and concern for our fellow man. Bless the members of this council, we pray, and bless this town, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty, and justice for all.
At this time, could I please have Mrs. Lois Leanhart, the grandmother of Sergeant Brian Leanhart? Can she please stand? The Maryville Town Council wishes to present to you this corsage. We thank you. Cradled between the 70th anniversary of D-Day on June 6th, as it was called, the beginning of the end, and Flag Day through an act of Congress by President Truman naming June 14th in honor of our grand old flag, we have the following special proclamation. Proclamation, Town of Maryville, State of Indiana, honoring Sergeant Brian Leanhart, whereas Sergeant Brian Leanhart, 21 of Maryville, died in Afghanistan on Friday, January 6, 2012, while serving our country; whereas he followed in the footsteps of his older brothers and enlisted in the United States Army in November 2007. He was deployed in November 2011 to Afghanistan where he served as a combat engineer; whereas he was a member of the 713th Engineer Company of the Indiana National Guard; whereas he was born March 6, 1990, the sixth of eight children; whereas he graduated from Hammond Baptist High School where he was a standout basketball player; whereas he is survived by his wife Diane, his parents, two sisters, five brothers, seven nieces and nephews, grandparents, and a huge host of aunts, uncles, and cousins; whereas former Governor Mitch Daniels stated, "With deep grief, but also with gratitude, for the courage of those we have lost, and pride that we come from a state that produces men such as these." Now therefore, the Maryville Town Council does hereby proclaim the month of June 2014, Sergeant Brian Leanhart Month. Whereon too, we have set our hands and caused the seal of the Town of Maryville to be affixed.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Spann, for the approval of the proclamation. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six to zero. And at this time, I would like to have Mr. Bob Leanhart, father. Could you please come up, please, and receive a copy of this proclamation? Also, at this time, I would like to hear a motion to have the gazebo area on the town property located in front of our town hall to be dedicated as a memorial in honor of Sergeant Brian Leanhart.
So moved, Madam President.
Second, Madam President.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Spann. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Madam Chairman, we skipped something in roll call.
Yes, the roll call.
Okay.
I noticed that. I thought nobody else was gonna notice. Tom, you are too slick for us.
I wasn't gonna.
You are too slick.
Dean was on a roll out in the audience, so.
Yes, he was. Mr. Gernsy, roll call, please.
Spann.
Present.
Hardaway.
Yep.
Garalcheck.
Present.
Baron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Whitey.
Here.
Here. Let it be noted, six councilpersons are present. Moving on to the consent agenda. Accounts payable register voucher approval June 10th, 2014, along with the approval of Town Council meeting minutes of May 27, 2014. Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Baron. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to standing committees, Budget and Finance, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report at this time.
Public Works, Councilman Pettit.
Madam President, as many of you know, they're out and about paving in a variety of different areas in the Town of Maryville. I want to give kudos to Bruce and to Robinson and Walsh and Kelly. Mississippi, unfortunately, south of 30 was a disaster two weeks ago, and Bruce and Walsh and Kelly and Robinson hustled, made it a safer condition where people aren't swinging over the center line. That's part of the reconstruction that will start in October, but I do want to say thank you to Bruce and Walsh and Kelly for getting out there and fixing that. Maryville Road looks good. Some of the local subdivision streets have been worked on already, so they're going hot and heavy with all the different street repaving for 2014. To that end, I do have a bit of bad news that Bruce gave me this morning or this evening. 73rd Avenue will be closed for six to eight weeks between Virginia and Mississippi as they refurbish the bridge over I-65 on 73rd Avenue. Bruce, you're going to a meeting tomorrow, right, with Endo?
I'm actually gonna be at a pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning, so I'll have more information on that closing, but I've been talking back and forth with Endo for about the last six to eight months about it. The one thing that I pretty much demanded was that they couldn't close 73rd Avenue until school's out.
Yep.
You know, there's so many buses that go down and across that bridge, so they've assured me, and they did, that they're not gonna start the project till afterwards, and they'll have the road back open before school starts.
And they're not gonna chew up the new stuff you paved in front of George Rogie's office, right?
No, it's just gonna, they're just gonna be working on the bridge.
Okay. What about spring cleanup, Bruce? Where are the guys at with that?
That's all finished.
That's all finished.
We'd still like to get through the town. We can free up a couple guys to take a trip or truck. There's still a few piles out there that need to be addressed, then we'll get those all cleaned up.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam President.
I got a couple of things. First thing is that I see that, Bruce, that they're starting to bring branches to North Bar now rather than 73rd.
Yeah, we just started at probably within the last week and a half.
Can we get a press release out informing residents that that's where the branches go rather than breaking them all the way down here and having to take them all the way back?
That would be fine.
Thank you, appreciate that. And the second thing, I was just informed prior to this meeting that the city of Gary is gonna be opening the 53rd Avenue paving bid very shortly. I don't know when, but it looks like help may be on the way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Anything else under Public Works? Council Affairs, Councilman Spann. Personnel Policy and Employed Benefits, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Public Safety, does anyone have anything under Public Safety?
I have something under Public Safety. Before the Redevelopment Commission meeting, we had a workshop to discuss the radio purchase for the town to be in compliance with the consolidation for the Lake County, and it was discussed that Motorola Solutions and Company would be the vendor that we're gonna purchase the radios from. The police department portion of the radios is $346,339.10. The fire department portion is $645,593.70, and the EMA portion is $28,723.75. The total purchase for all three departments is gonna be $1,020,655.55. That's my motion for the purchase agreement through Motorola Solutions and Company.
Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Pettit.
Point of clarification, Madam President. Further discussion at that meeting, Tom, was it through the Clerk Treasurer, we're gonna do a five-year lease purchase, is that correct, Chief Yerga and Deputy Chief Donahue? Okay, and that first payment is not due till 2015? All right.
Very good. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved, six to zero.
That's all I had under Public Safety, Madam Chair.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to Parks and Recreation, Councilman Spann.
Next week is, summer camp will be starting in the parks. Also, Works Park, I'm gonna make a motion for the park improvements of the playground, and also the porn play. So it's averaging around $57,000, but that's not, if there's any other work, we wanna go to the, I think it's a $75,000 table or something, if there's other work needed. I don't think it is, but the porn place do save us on the, you know, that truckload of stuff we put out there.
The mulch, the rubberized mulch?
That's another one. And so that's my motion, Madam President.
Okay. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Are you saying not to exceed $75,000?
Right.
And so what we put in there was $75,000 out of CCD to not exceed that for a park improvement, so we pick one park every year, and Werder's Park was one of the ones that Chuck from Play, not sure what the name of that company, said was that was one of our worst parks that we needed to.
New toys.
New toys.
Okay, very good.
So he did an evaluation.
Motion by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck regarding park improvements.
And the only reason I raised the 75 is because some of the guys from Public Works were talking to me that there's a, some type of wet land right by that gazebo thing, and so they're gonna take a look at it and see if we need to do something with that. I haven't heard it from anybody in my residence, but they noticed it from cutting the grass.
All right. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron? Aye.
Pettit?
Aye.
Yes, motion approved, seven to zero. Anything else, Councilman Spann?
Oh, that's it, I'm sorry.
Okay, very good.
Madam President, next item on the agenda is the public hearing, which has been noticed in the newspaper to approve the disposal of the town's vacant parcels of surplus land. Specifically, the Town Council is proposing to dispose of the vacant parcel Hendricks Park located at 3694 West 80th Lane, Maryville, Indiana, and also Lot 1 of Union Park located at 7200 Broadway, both parcels in Maryville, Indiana. And Madam President, be appropriate to open the public hearing at this time.
Do we have anyone to make any comments regarding the public hearing? Anyone on public hearing? Anyone on public hearing? Seeing none on public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
We will be closing the public hearing.
Madam President, be appropriate for the council now to pass a motion that approves the disposal of these two surplus parcels of land and to authorize the engagement of a licensed auctioneer for the purpose of proceeding with the sale.
Madam President, before we, question to you and/or Bruce, Lot 1 of Union Park, what specifically is on Lot 1? Is that the White House?
That is the White House, yes.
All right, okay, just to clarify it. So Lot 2 is the big passive park that's, okay.
The park parcel that is part of our park plan is being retained.
Right.
The surplus portion to the north that has been subdivided as a separate lot is what's being disposed. That portion is not needed.
Okay.
On the motion, Madam President.
Second, Madam President.
Motion by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilman Pettit, for the disposal of vacant parcels, and also to engage a licensed auctioneer to advertise the sale and conduct a public auction of these parcels.
On the question, are we gonna use Rick Neimeyer again? Yes. Okay. He did a pretty good job of advertising it last time, just seemed that there wasn't enough interest in some of the parcels.
Very good. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Aye.
Pettit? Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Environmental Affairs, Councilman Garalcheck.
I don't have any report at this time, but I will defer to Matt Lake.
I just have a couple of things. We welcome a new member to our Stormwater Board, Mr. Ralph Simmick. He's been in Maryville for four years, over four years, and is a retired senior. We just completed an application which will be submitted tomorrow to the Calumet River Basin Commission to fund a series of flood control projects in the Meadowdale Sub watershed. We recently, with the idea last Thursday, we're continuing our process, become designated as a clean community, which our goals will entail implementing five environmental priorities to proactively manage impacts associated with governmental operations. And we're continuing with our infrastructure replacement. We recently had to close part of Chase Street down just south of 53rd to replace a rusted-out culvert, so we're continuing with those improvements as we see fit, so that's all I have.
Okay, very good.
Madam President, through, to Matt and Tom and my Public Works Committee, so you folks know, I did have a conversation with Derek Oswald as I brought up the guardrail on the two sections across from Dairy Queen on Taff Street. You know, guys, I stand by it. I'm not an engineer, but I travel it every day, and you can see the slope down. I talked to Derek about the wires that Mayor McDermott had gotten on I-65 when he was chairman of NERPC. I brought those to Derek's attention to investigate those. Maybe we use those instead of guardrails. I know guardrails are kinda, you know, they don't give, right, Bruce?
No, they don't.
But somebody's gonna go down that slope, God forbid, on an icy condition as we had last winter, and, you know, they're gonna, as I told Derek, they're gonna go after the Town of Maryville, they're gonna go after Stormwater, they're gonna go after the State of Indiana, because we didn't take the precautions and at least look at it and identify it. So just, so I think we're on the record, we need to look at those two sections, guys. I stand by it again, so.
I emailed Derek today, actually. I had to send him the plan profiles for the ditch, so if it previously, if the cross-section profile required it before, then they would, they would then excel it.
They would put it in if it required it before, yeah.
So he's got all the information, so he's reviewing it right now.
There's, that road for Taff is paved now, those strips that were humpy.
Yeah, they did redo that.
Nice and smooth.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else on Environmental Affairs? Seeing nothing. Elections and Public Relations, I am reminding everyone of our Independence Day Parade, as will be held July 3rd at 7 o'clock PM. Also, a farmer's market will be held in the parking lot up front on the 2nd and 4th Sunday in July and August, from noon to 3:00 PM. So if we have any backyard garners that want to bring their tomatoes or their cucumbers or peppers, there is no charge, whatever you sell, you take back, okay? Economic Development, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Utility Liaisons, Councilwoman Baron.
I just am looking for a date to meet with Jeff Langdon about some of the recycled products we can get from Solway-Sandivit.
Anyone else on the Utility Liaisons? Under Town Government Reorganization, you know, like many towns and cities, Maryville is not exempt to abandoned homes. With the abandoned homes, we always do have an increase in crime, whether it's violent crimes, whether it's drug activities, rapes, molestation, murders, or arson's. And many of these homes, they're really nice-looking homes, they just need a little bit of attention. We all have them in all our words. None of us are exempt. So therefore, I would like to create a committee called Abandoned and Blighted Properties. There is a possibility that we may be focusing on Maryville veterans first, or any veterans second, to come and take advantage of these homes. So with that, I would like to appoint the only three councilmen we have on this dais that are veterans. I would be honored if Army Veteran Councilman Richard Hardaway would head that committee.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Also, along with Navy Veteran Councilman Don Spann, and Navy Veteran Clerk Treasurer Eugene Gernsy.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. Does anyone have any discussion or questions regarding this new committee? Again, this is in, we are in our first steps of forming this committee, and I'm sure with all the homes in Maryville, this will be a quite active committee.
Thank you, Madam. Mr. Buscemi?
Yes, Councilman.
We'd probably, we'd like to meet with you as soon as possible so that we can, you know, Senate Bill 422, which was just passed last session, is the primary bill that we'll be working under. So anything that we will need as far as ordinances or resolutions or whatever, we'd like to get this thing started as quick as we possibly can, and I ask each councilperson here to identify some vacant homes in your neighborhoods that we may want to go after so that we'll have a working list at all times. And as Mrs. Miano said, first option would be for disabled vets. We would give them opportunity to make the first purchase of the home, and then we would look at veterans second. And as a third alternative, then we would open it up to any resident. But there's some things that we need to work out before we get this thing fully established, so if you get some time, let me know, and Gene, myself, and Don, we'd all like to sit down with you so that we could make sure that we're gonna be headed in the right direction to get this thing rolling.
Councilman, I'm prepared to meet with the committee whenever the committee wishes to have its first meeting. You've got, you've been formed as a committee, and my schedule's available to you. I'll be prepared to review the basics of Senate Enrolled Act 422 at our first meeting. What Councilman Hardaway mentioned is important. The first step should be to systematically compile an accurate inventory of the vacant and abandoned homes within the town's jurisdiction. I think before you have an inventory, I don't think there should be any specific steps taken. The inventory tells you what your universe of properties is that you're gonna work with, and then the committee would develop its policies and make recommendations to the council at that time, because you'll know more about the big picture.
Right.
So I'm prepared to help, whenever you'd like to convene a meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I would, I would ask everybody to, you know, the first meeting in July, if we could have a working list, I think that would, that gives everybody enough time. It's summertime, lot of stuff going on, so I don't want to say next council meeting. The first meeting in July would be appropriate.
Brenda, is there any, through your department, or Bruce through your department, or for that matter, through any other department, is there a potential source of vacant and abandoned property, at least partial inventory, based on past citations or things of that nature that could be, that could be provided to Mr. Hardaway?
Well, that was, that was the first question that came into mind.
At least we're starting with that base and not reinventing the wheel, but each councilman, I think, should still turn in his or her own list to be cross-checked against code enforcement's list.
But again, what is the definition of abandoned and vacant building, time-wise? You know, if they've up and left, and no for-sale sign, for-sale sign, you know?
Well, that's a good, councilman's, the councilman's point is an important point. I think at our first meeting, that's one thing we should pin down is what falls within that definition, then we'll know what we're working.
We've all had experiences with Vicki and with Barb in the past, and throughout this town where, you know, unfortunately, we have absentee landlord landlords, we have, more importantly, and I'll take a shot at them now, all the financial institutions that just, quite frankly, don't give a damn, because it's, they, they got their money, or they've written the mortgage off, and they don't care that there's 18 inches of weeds in the 5300 block of Pennsylvania. They don't care that houses are deteriorating in Maryville. They just don't. How often does Vicki chase mortgage companies around and banks around and gets nowhere?
This is gonna make these mortgage companies, they have six months. Once they get, they'll get a letter from us, they have six months, step up. After six months, we just come and take that house. If you live in a house, and you, if it's a blighted house, they're gonna get a letter saying, if you don't fix this house up, get up to standards. It's a blighted house. In six months, we're gonna take it. We'll get it back up.
That's what 422 does?
That's what 422 does.
It allows them to protect, it allows them to protect their mortgage interest, but if they don't act, their mortgage interest is extinguished.
Right. That's what it does.
And this is the thing, that we spend more money on that house on 73rd Avenue, take this guy to court. And if we had this law back then, we could, we could have solved that problem like two years earlier.
Yep.
I mean, I think it's gonna be a win for everybody, for the town and for disabled vets and vets.
Everybody, and nobody wants a empty house next door, and, you know, just walking around, driving around like that, you'll see, you'll see a beautiful brick house, high weeds, and you know, why? Well, the banks got it, and they don't care. The guy lives in, our company owns it in Texas, they don't care. We care.
Gene, take a look at Dr. Brozavon's house on East 97th Avenue.
Oh, exactly right.
$1.5 million home is absolutely worthless, isn't it, Joe? Joe and I were out there with, with my precinct committee lady out there. It's an absolute shame.
And if we had this law, six months ago, that'd been out.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to ADA Compliances, I have no report. Ornances, we have no ordinances due for first readings, but we do have several for second readings. Ornance 1417. An ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance, Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established R2 single-family residential to a planned unit development, mixed-use zoning classification. That ordinance number 03-23 entitled, "Maryville, Indiana's Zoning Ordinance," and particularly the zone maps, which has replaced ordinance number 78-5B, and the same is hereby amended by changing the following described real estate on the zone maps from its established R2 single-family residential zoning classification to a planned unit development, mixed-use zoning classification. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, any public comment? Do we have any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Span? Yes. Hardaway?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Aye.
Pettit? Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ornance fourteen dash nineteen. Ornance twelve dash forty-four, amended of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinance zero-seven dash fifteen, establishing hours, days, and limitations in which consumer fireworks may be used, ignited, or discharged. Specifically, the use of consumer fireworks within the corporate limits of the Town of Maryville shall be limited to the following locations. A, a special discharge location. B, the property of the person, or C, the property of another who has given permission to use consumer fireworks. D, consumer fireworks shall not be used, ignited, or discharged in any of the Maryville parks. A violation of the times, dates, or location as provided in this ordinance shall be an ordinance violation, subject to a fine of up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This ordinance is declared to be an emergency and shall go into effect as soon as proper notices are published.
Motion to approve, Madam President, with a question?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Yes, Councilman?
Uh, to either Mr. Bishemi or Chief Petrush. We talk about, uh, discharging any Maryville parks. What about town of Maryville property? Uh, a lot of people, especially in, in all of our neighborhoods, light them off in the streets, which technically is town of Maryville right-of-way. It's town property. Are they allowed to light them in the street, John?
No, no, they're not, because of a special discharge location.
Or the property of the person, Madam President.
Exactly, the property of the person.
They're not allowed to light them in the street, are they?
By, uh, by definition, that would exclude street, exclude streets and right-of-ways, because a street or right-of-way is not a permitted discharge area.
Right, okay.
The operative wording there, Councilman, is the discharge of fireworks is limited only to A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
Question. I got some circles where, where I got the residents, they go in that circle and light them. And it's never been a problem or anything. Is that including this?
No, that would actually be, not be permitted by the ordinance.
Unless it's their property. One person's property that allows the other neighbors to ignite.
You know how their houses are-
Call the sec.
Call the sec, no, no, not allowed.
Yep.
Call the sec.
No, sir.
I'm just asking, I need to let them know.
Yeah, 'cause you go get it.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing no public comment, roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Span? Yes. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ornance fourteen dash twenty. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, approving a lease for certain public improvements between the Town of Maryville Redevelopment Authority and the Town of Maryville Redevelopment Commission, and approving the levy of a special tax to the extent tax increment revenues are insufficient for the payment of rentals under such lease and regarding certain related matters.
Motion to approve, Madam President, for discussion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck. Discussion, Councilman Pettit?
Uh, yes, Madam President. Bob Swantz, our financial advisor, is Bob still with us? Hi, Bob. This is for the Amerplex bond refinance, folks. This is going to save us again on interest. Bob, what are we paying right now? Eight point two?
Eight percent right now.
Eight percent right now on the TIF bond for the Amerplex, uh, TIF. We're gonna go down to about three point four?
Hopefully somewhere.
Somewhere in there, um, and, and get rid of that debt, um, and then, um, pay that off. And in doing so, Bob has set this up where we have a redevelopment authority of three members, which will lease from the redevelopment commission, uh, and, and then sell the bonds, correct?
The redevelopment authority will actually issue the bonds, and they will lease to the commission the infrastructure in order to pay the bonds off.
So I don't know if there's any questions of the members?
No.
Got it.
Bottom line, substantial financing savings.
Savings, exactly.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing?
Question on the fireworks again?
Let's, uh, can we bring that up under new business? Let's get this out of the way here. One, uh, yeah.
Let's load on this one.
Call for the question, Madam President, if there's no discussion.
All right, do we have any public comments? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing no public comment, roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Yes. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Seeing no resolutions or BZA actions, do we have any old business? Any old business? Do we have any new business?
I'd like to make sure that that is a newspaper article about-
Hopefully, they will put it in.
Please.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, very good. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Does anybody wish to come up to the mic? Anyone? Please. State your name and address, please.
My name's Charles Best, I live at Seventy-sixth and Marshall Place. And I just come before you to thank the Town Council for the proclamation for, for Brian, much needed. And I understand, uh, Veterans Cafe is talking about or moving forward with, uh, having a meal named after Brian in his honor. And they want a, a photo of him to put in his, in their, uh, rest shirt. And I'd like to thank Carol, I come up, I think it was the last board meeting, and made, made mention of this to her, and, uh, two or three days later, I got a phone call. Now, that, that don't happen very often with a situation like this, and I want to thank you very much, Carol.
You're welcome, Mr. Best.
Thank the Lenhart family for being here tonight, and bless them for their sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Best. Is there anyone here from the Veterans Cafe? Is Bessie here? For those who do not know about the Veterans Cafe, it is a business that is owned and operated and ran by veterans. I was in, um, the cafe last week, and I spoke to Bessie, and she asked me if the family would know what was, um, Brian's favorite food. You know, if he liked hamburgers or french toast, she wants to have this honored in his name. And also, like Mr. Best said, I'm sorry, what was that?
English.
She's, I don't know if she has that, but she just might get some. But she would be honored to have a photo of Brian to hang at the Veterans Cafe.
I can do that.
Madam President, one thing.
Yes, sir.
Bruce, could you get a, uh, brick application out of your office and give it to the family? And we'd like to, uh, put a brick out at the Veterans Memorial at Seventy-third Avenue in his honor.
Very good. Do we have any more under public comment?
Someone did want to speak, correct, from the family?
Yes.
My name's Kurt Lenhart, uh, I live out at eighteen fifty-five Fourth Circle in Crown Point, um, Brian's uncle. First of all, I want to thank you all. That does mean a lot. And the question I had, and it might be asking for much, but I don't know, because I hardly ever do this, is there a possibility of having a portion of a street or a street named after him?
Well, we're gonna have to discuss this with Bruce Byers, he's a town manager. Most of our streets are presidential and also state. Perhaps we can do an honorary? We could do an honorary sign?
That would work.
The reason why I said an honorary sign was at the Ahepas, it's a senior, um, apartment complexes. I had several signs with honorary Ahepa lanes. I'm sorry.
Remind the uncle that, uh, the gazebo is dedicated in your neighborhood.
Yes, the gazebo is also going to be dedicated. But, um, I'd like to talk to Mr. Lenhart, to maybe if we could find the, the street that, uh, Brian grew up on or something like this, you know, this is all, all food for thought for us.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else under public comments? Please step right up.
My name's Robert Lenhart Jr. Brian was my son. I grew up here in Maryville. Served on the fire department for several years. And, uh, I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything and everyone and, and what you've done. It means the world to me.
We understand, sir, we understand, and and thank you for raising your son and giving him to our country.
Oh, he was, he was the fourth one of my sons.
Yes, yes.
That served. But, uh, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate all of this. This blows me away.
We thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else under public comments? I know I met a lady outside, and she was saying that she has some ideas. I don't recall who she was. But if you want to come up, now's your chance. Anyone else under public comment? Very good. Seeing no further public comment announcements. Environmental Resources Committee meeting June nineteenth at two o'clock PM. The Redevelopment Commission meeting June twenty-fourth at six o'clock PM. Town Council meeting June twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Meeting adjourned.